Welcome to the August 18th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And tonight's invocation is led by Mr. Phillips as well as the pledge. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. For the whole world and all people who have one maker and father made, may we acknowledge one another as brothers and sisters without discrimination of race or nation and with sincere hearts seeking the kingdom of God, which is peace and joy in the Holy Spirit. Let us pray to the Lord, and we ask that we come to you in humility and good conscience and asking for good judgment. In these words, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Witten?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Present.
Mr. Severt?
Present.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Pierce?
Mrs. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
Excuse Mr. Pierce.
Second.
Motion excused Mr. Pierce by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Witten. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce is excused.
Thank you. First thing tonight, we'll have a public hearing. Mrs. Knight, could you read what that pertains to, please?
Ordinance number O-232025, an ordinance changing the zoning of 57.679 acres in Lot 11851 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the Miami County zoning of A2 general agriculture to the city zoning of R4, single-family residence district.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to make comments, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and have your say.
My name's Carol Kerber. I live at 326 South Plum Street in Troy, and I have a few comments about this proposed legislation. Agricultural land is considered to be a resource, according to my AI research. This means it cannot be readily replaced by natural means at a pace quick enough to keep up with consumption, in this case, housing development, which means it will run out after typically taking millions of years to form. This definition leads me to ask many questions. I consulted the USDA website, where I found a detailed soil map of Western Miami County. Pretty interesting, fun. This section is comprised, this western section is comprised of silt-lome soil, which is the very best for agricultural usage. So, what is our responsibility to future generations regarding this non-renewable resource? Do we need to decide just what we want Troy to be? Who makes this decision? Small-town bedroom community, extension of Montgomery County, industrial? How much do our choices today affect the use of this land? Could we make it a priority to use land already violated and being labeled a brownfield as an option? Are there already opportunities in place that are not being utilized or underutilized, such as the possibility of land trust? And my final question is, have city officials discussed the new comprehensive plan with county officials?
Is that a?
This is not a question-and-answer time. Have they?
I don't know if we have or haven't. I don't have that information. We'll find out for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Bill. All right. If you have not, can we consider a more collaborative approach in forming these decisions and plans? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Wyatt, and I currently live in Ludlow Falls. And I also live here in Troy. I have to drive 55 every day, several times a day. And there are times that I go down Wilson. There are times that I take Center. There are times where I have to take Nashville. And it is so, it is so, there's so much traffic. And I can only imagine with the new development that's at Nashville and 55 that's coming. I do know that they have added a lane, a soft lane, I'm assuming where the folks that live there can, you know, turn in easily. But actually, I look at that as a big hazard. People drive fast on 55, sometimes up to 60, 70. I have seen motorcycles just drive crazy down through there. I'm just afraid of the traffic. There's no light. Although I do believe the Nashville interchange has been great. Now, I'm just concerned about this new development that's going to add hundreds and hundreds, that's really going to put a very, I don't know a word for it, but it is just going to cause a lot of chaos for that area. And I just don't think there's been significant planning. I'd like to hear, I think the community as a whole would like to hear what is going on, what would happen to that whole area. And I don't, driving through there, there is nothing like seeing those crops. I know, I mean, there's nothing like driving down that road and seeing the beauty of corn. I know that sounds crazy, but when you see the sun come setting, or sun coming up, and it comes behind that corn and that soybean, it is beautiful. It is beautiful. I mean, you should just take a trip through there. And that is testament on how valuable that land is and to put on housing. And I know that we need housing in the city. I know in the whole area. We're house poor. And I just want us to really investigate as a community other opportunities for more housing, not in prime farm country. We only get farm country once. You put a house on it, you can't, it's going to be there forever. We're going to lose that beautiful land for what, housing? And it's going to cause a lot of trouble with traffic. And then, I was just thinking about our schools. My grandkids went to Troy. And I can't imagine how big those classes are going to be. And I hope you're ready. I hope everybody's ready for that. I just don't think it is. I don't think it is. And Mr. Tinnington, I know it looks like you've got a headache. I've got a worry. I've got a worry headache about this. And I think we all should be concerned about this. So, anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for listening to me. I appreciate your thinking about this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bradley Berman, Crestwood Drive. I live on the north side of town, as a lot of you know, going towards Pickwa. And over the last five to 10 years, we have seen an enormous amount of growth on that side of town, so much that I have gone as far as to say that I'm predicting that in the next 10 to 20 years, Troy is going to grow out to where I live. Now, that raises a question. Is Miami County losing its identity as a farming community? And I would say yes, that it is. We are so quick to allow these developers to come in and buy up prime farmland, offer a good price, and these farmers take it. There should be a way that we can look at balancing the need for housing with the need to conserve the prime farmland, because, believe it or not, agriculture is what drives our state. And I don't think we're doing a very good job of that right now. And then there's the increased traffic, the increased strain on our schools. A lot of things that go into this that we don't even know about yet. But yet, we're so quick to bring in developers. For what? We talk about having a housing problem. Yes, I agree, we have a housing problem in Troy. Well, what are we doing to attract the starter families who are my age and younger, like Kristi and myself? The younger families? We don't even have affordable housing for them. We're building houses $200,000, $300,000 on these properties. That should be a concern for everyone in this room. So while I'm asking, if we're going to do this, we need to balance the agricultural property with the need for housing. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. Will Harrelson, 9 West Water Street. I am technically the applicant for the owner. I'm the owner's legal counsel for this application. And I just wanted to address a couple of points that were raised by the last three speakers. A lot of the sentiments were shared between the speakers, and that is an acknowledgement that there is a need for housing. I know that Mrs. Kerber mentioned that agricultural land is a resource. The second speaker mentioned that there's not been significant planning for this type of development. Looking for other opportunities, there's not enough vacant space in the city limits that's not agricultural, let alone vacant land for sale for this type of development. And the last speaker mentioned balancing the need for housing with the need for farmland. And I believe that council understands that this city did undertake a massive project with the comprehensive plan and did hire consultants, engineering consultants, traffic consultants, population analysts, a whole team that looked at this entire city and its land use. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of points from the comprehensive plan that addresses this. That being that this particular parcel was designated as a single-unit detached residential parcel on the future land use portion of the plan. That comprehensive plan says that rezonings must align with the future land use map. There is other agricultural land that's nearby this parcel that was left as agriculture. And there's other farm parcels around this particular parcel that also were designated as future single-unit detached residential. The study found that we have a shortfall of 5,419 housing units in the city. There's not enough developments going on right now to fulfill the over 5,000 housing unit shortfall. So this is the type of development that was contemplated by the city and its consultants. This parcel is the type of parcel that was specifically designated as a future single-family, single-unit detached residential, which is really more of a, commonly defined as a single-family use. The comprehensive plan noted that the northwest and western growth areas were the area for capacity, that had capacity for growth. It encouraged the continued residential development and promoting a variety of housing options. I think, Mrs. Kerber mentioned brownfield development. Well, there is a developer who has been starting the process of developing a brownfield site in Troy for a different type of housing use than this one. The comprehensive plan furthermore documented that the density of this was 1 to 8 detached units per acre. So this is the type of density for that type of parcel in that the, I think the city since 2019 has approved 15 annexations along the northeastern and western boundaries. These are the rim areas of the city limits that the comprehensive plan has designated as future residential growth. So this is the analysis that was performed by the city, adopted by the Planning Commission, and this rezoning is simply in line with this city's future comprehensive plan and land use. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone? We will close the public hearings. Moving on. Mrs. Knight, could you please read the summary of the minutes of the August 4th meeting, please?
Minutes of council, August 4, 2025. A public hearing was held on ordinance number O-222025. Committee reports. Following a recommendation by the Personnel Committee, the appointment of Becky Smith to the City Beautification Committee was approved. Streets and sidewalks committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing advertising for bids and a contract for the Adams Street Riverside Drive-Stoughton Road Roundabout. Resolution number R-402025, amendment to professional services agreement related to Proudy Plaza Design was given third reading and was adopted. Resolution number R-432025, advertising for bids for the Adams Street Riverside Drive-Stoughton Road Roundabout was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-222025, a rezoning and approval of the Eagles Landing subdivision plan development was given second reading. Ordinance number O-232025, a rezoning was given first reading. Following various comments, council then adjourned at 7:42 PM.
Move to accept the minutes as read. Second. Move to accept the minutes by Mr. Twist, second by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. We will start with law and ordinance, Mr. Witten.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two reports this evening. First one is, this committee met on August 11th regarding joining other communities and the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association, the OMAA, an amicus brief being filed by the City of Columbus regarding a matter pending before the Ohio Supreme Court that would limit a city's authority regarding property maintenance. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared, authorizing the city of Troy to sign on to the amicus brief being filed by the City of Columbus as recommended by the Director of Law. The committee supports emergency legislation as this brief is due on before September 10th. This is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Marshall, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Any questions or comments? Please continue.
This committee also met on August 11th through the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that 86.88 acres of a portion of the property known as the ELC, LLC, and Core Annexation located on Wilson Road, south of State Route 718, be rezoned from county zoning classification A2, general agriculture, to the city, to a city of Troy Plan Development Residential and that the general plan of the Eagles Landing subdivision Plan Development Residential be approved. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and the findings of staff and recommends that ordinance number O-222025 be adopted to approve the rezoning of 86.88 acres, including parcels DOA 107838, DOA 107842, and DOA 107844 to the PRD and to approve the general plan of the Eagles Landing subdivision Plan Development Residential. That is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Marshall, Mr. Twist, and myself as Chair.
Questions on that? Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Chairman Phillips.
Thank you, sir. This committee met August 11th regarding the final consent legislation requested by the Ohio Department of Transportation for the ODOT project of safety improvements to the I-75 and State Route 41 interchange and constructing pedestrian facilities on State Route 41. This project will be bid by ODOT this year with the city responsible for paying a small portion of an estimated $4 million project. The city's share is estimated to be $67,261. However, that amount could later be adjusted based on final bids. It is the recommendation of the committee that legislation be prepared, approving the final consent legislation for the ODOT project of safety improvements to the I-75 and State Route 41 interchange and the payment of $67,261, the city's current estimated share of the project cost. Based on the ODOT format and the date of the city's estimated cost, it is to be, estimated cost is to be paid. This committee supports emergency legislation. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schilling, Mrs. Westfall, and myself as Chair.
Questions? Comments? Thank you very much. Moving on to citizens' comments. At this time, on any committee reports or anything on our agenda item. Once again, if you want to make comments, please come up to the podium, name and address for the record. And at this point, you'll have two minutes to say whatever you'd like to say.
Carol Kerber, 326 South Plum. I am insulted that no one in this room would answer my question if anyone from this city was a part of the county comprehensive plan discussions. Yes or no?
Mr. Chair, I haven't had a discussion.
I haven't. I don't know that any of these nine people.
What about Mr. Titterington?
I can't answer for him. He'll have to answer for himself.
But you answer me.
First of all, you're supposed to discuss with Mr. Rozell. If he'd like me to answer, then I'd be glad to answer. So if the question is, was the county involved in the city's comprehensive planning process? I don't recall whether they were part of a focus group or not. I believe maybe in other capacities that they were. The city, on the other hand, was involved and did participate in the county's comprehensive plan. We don't consult with the county on rezonings and annexations in particular unless there are questions about locations. We follow our comprehensive plan and our map. I'm not sure what else you might be asking.
Well, I'm asking if there couldn't be a collaboration in the future over such a hot topic as this expansion of housing. You throw the, with all due respect, you throw all these facts and figures around. I think citizens need to be involved. And I also believe that we, every county, or every city in this area or township should have some input on all this, because it affects all of us. It's not just us.
And since you brought that up, whether it was a year ago or two years ago, might have been more than two years ago now, the county Development Department, as part of the land bank and CIC process, did publish a report that discussed some of the pending issues, including childcare, transportation, and housing was also involved in that. That was an all-community, plus there was township representation. And the city of Troy had at least two, if not more, representatives on that. So there has been a comprehensive look at the housing issues in the county, using the regional as well as the state data and discussing what kind of opportunities that we need.
I didn't quite understand if I could put back a minute.
Time. Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Mr. Witten?
Mrs. Kerber, that piece of agenda for, I don't have the...
O-23.
Yes, that will be coming to committee next Monday. That'll be my committee. I'll make sure those questions can be asked and hopefully get some answers, more detailed answers for you, if you wish. The resolution before us that we have discussed in our committee meetings tonight is a different piece. I just want to make sure you were either talking about both or one specifically. I wasn't sure. Since you came up for the one next week, I assume that's what you were talking about, but maybe you were talking in a broader sense.
I was thinking both of them and all in general. I think that we really need to take a hard look at what's happening about development, especially with our natural resources. And I think citizens have a responsibility to say how big and how far out we want our community to go. And I think that there's other ways to do it other than keep eating land.
And whether you can attend next week or not, make sure we get some of those, try to get some of those questions answered and bring that topic up to our committee next Monday at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Anyone else? We will move on to our resolutions. Mrs. Knight, could you please read Resolution R-442025?
Resolution number R-442025, final resolution authorizing consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for safety improvements at the Interstate 75 and State Route 41 interchange and the construction of pedestrian facilities on State Route 41 within the corporation limit of the city of Troy, Ohio, authorizing payment of the city of Troy's share of the project and declaring an emergency. This includes the city's payment for its share in the amount of $60,261, based on the current estimate. This is the first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second. Move to suspend by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second. Move to adopt by Mr., excuse me, Twist, second by Mr. Phillips. Please call the roll, Mrs. Knight.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R-452025, please?
Resolution number R-452025, resolution authorizing the city of Troy, Ohio to join in filing an amicus curia brief with the Ohio Supreme Court in the matter of City of North Canton versus CF Holmes LLC, Ohio Supreme Court Case Number 2025-0458, and declaring an emergency. This is the first reading.
Move for suspension.
Second. Move to suspend by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall?
Yes.
Mr. Witten?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt, second. Question? Yes, sir. Mr. Schilling?
I'd like to ask this question. I know in the committee meetings last week, there were some committee members that had some questions concerning this legislation and maybe had wanted to talk to Mr. Kerber for a better explanation. Has anybody done that, or you are all satisfied with what's going on with that?
I had spoken with Mr. Kerber the Friday previous before that committee meeting, so I was very comfortable understanding what was going on. I just didn't know if there was any other details that he wanted to, that he wanted to bring up before we voted. But I had already spoken previously to Mr. Kerber.
Does he have any details that he'd like to bring up? Well, you know, I can sort of give an overview of this in addition to the memo that was submitted to council. And it's probably best to start with how this case came about. Unlike, the city of Troy does not have a rental registration program, but the city of North Canton does. And as part of that, landlords are required to have certain safety features, and such as carbon monoxide detectors, smoke detectors. You know, there's certain, there are egress points in the case of a fire to make sure somebody can get out of.
points in the case of a fire to make sure somebody can get out of a housing unit, make sure the property has heating, cooling, running water, things of that nature. Now, again, the city does not have that, but in this case, North Canton enacted this rental registration program, and the owner of the residential -- the landlord refused to allow the city to inspect the property to determine whether or not those safety features are present. And the court said that, you know, that -- and followed well-established precedent indicating that in order to obtain an administrative search warrant from the court, that what the city of North Canton had to demonstrate was that their inspection program, when weighed against the landlord's privacy interest in the property, as long as it's a reasonable intrusion based on, you know, established case law, that the court would go ahead and allow an inspection with, you know, the landlord obviously also had an opportunity to object to it and argue that the inspection program was not appropriate. So that's the established law. The court went ahead with the established law. Well, the landlord has now challenged that in the Supreme Court. And what the landlord is asking the Supreme Court to do is say that in those situations, the city would have to prove that there's probable cause, that there's a violation of that -- the safety components within there. Now, a lot of those things, that's -- that can be almost impossible because just the nature of it that, you know, that they couldn't get in. And I went through and I looked at some of the -- and probably the closest analogous inspection program that the city has is fire inspections for commercial properties. And I don't know if you're aware that our members of our fire department will inspect commercial properties and make sure there's things such as, you know, fire extinguishers if there's a -- required to be a sprinkler system, that it's in good working order and things of that nature. And while this has never occurred, that I'm aware of, that a property owner refusing the fire department to inspect, there could be a situation in which a property owner would say, you can't inspect. You need to have probable cause that there's a violation on the premises. So when the president of the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association reached out to the different communities a week, a week and a half ago, asking if there's any support to keep the status quo, you know, that's when I thought I was compelled to bring that to council's attention to see if that's something that you would support. Now, again, I can't stress enough that we're not asking to break any new ground. We're just being supportive. And actually, Troy's code does not have a lot of, like, inspection regimens contained within it, but the close -- again, the most analogous would be fire inspection and things like that. And that's just to make sure some of those safety regulations are in place. And so that's sort of the background on the case, and the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association is going to urge that the Supreme Court don't change -- that they don't change the current standard because it -- by all accounts, it's not abused. There's no evidence of its abuse and that it's been well-established. I mean, in fact, the last time the U.S. Supreme Court looked at this was, give or take, over 30 years ago, and it's the same standard that Ohio is following at this point in time. So we're just asking that the status quo be preserved.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Was it a split? I mean, was it -- did the Court of Appeals and the lower court both side with the city?
Yes, both. It was both the trial court and the -- and I -- hold on. It was the -- it was Stark County, and this was the 5th Appellac District, and they both --
sided with the city.
Yeah, they both sided with the city, but the landlord has asked the Supreme Court to look at that.
Mr. Kerber, we're not asking for any city funds.
No, as far as this, we're -- I mean, the city's lending its name to the brief, and there's not going to be any request that the city expend any funds and that. We are lending our name, and we're just asking the Supreme Court to uphold the status quo.
I believe we had a motion by Mr. Twist, and Mr. Severt was in the process of seconding in it.
Yes.
Mrs. Knight, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance O. 22, 2025, please?
Ordinance number O. 22, 2025. An ordinance changing the zoning of parcels D-08107838, D-08107842, and D-08107844. A total of 86.88 acres in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the Miami County zoning of A2, general agriculture, to a planned development residential, PDR, and approving the general plan of the Eagles Landing subdivision planned development residential, PDR. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is located -- three parcels located on Wilson Road. Third reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Phillips. Second by Mr. Twist. Any final questions before we call the roll? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Westfall.
Yes.
Mr. Witten.
Yes.
Mr. Twist.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Severt.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you read our final ordinance tonight, O. 23, 2025, please?
Ordinance number O. 23, 2025. An ordinance changing the zoning of 57.679 acres in Lot 11851 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the Miami County zoning of A2, general agriculture, to the city zoning of our four single-family residence district. This area of 57.679 acres is located at the southeast corner of Wilson Road and Finner Road, has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This will be a subject of a committee meeting next -- a week from today, and this is the second reading.
This will go to Law and Ordinance, 6:00 p.m. next Monday, 25th, right here. Thank you. Any communications or announcements, Mrs. Knight?
No, sir.
What would you like to comment on tonight, Mayor?
Well, I have a -- an event coming up from Judge Mayor -- Judge Mayor, Judge Stacy Wall, and she asked if I would share this with you. The 2025 Mental Health and Community Resource Fair will be held September 4th from 10:30 to 1:30 p.m. at the County Courthouse Plaza, hosted by the Miami County Common Pleas Mental Health Court. And there will be food trucks as it's over the lunch hour, and she wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. So the other thing I would mention for Mrs. Kerber is that there were a lot of public engagement items or events held for the comprehensive plan, so there were plenty of opportunities for the public to give their input. And that's what council is for, is for the people to let you know what their feelings and thoughts are on issues, and we'll continue to have public input. Thank you.
Director of Public, Service of Safety, Mr. Titter.
Well, I was going to lead with that one, but I won't. Just a couple of general ones that you guys all look forward to. Halloween.
Yeah.
Thursday, October 30th. Also, cemetery cleanup by the city is in October, and so prior to that, in the month of September, we encourage all of those that have an interest in the cemetery, that's the time to move things out and clean things up before we have to come in for our semi-annual sweep. That's all I have.
So I believe the signs will read October to November 1st. So if you need stuff and you want to keep stuff that's not within potential regulations, you need to do it before October. Auditor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
Director of Law, Mr. Kerber.
I spoke more than I usually do this evening, so I --
Does that mean you have nothing?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Twist?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, sir. I got the honor to speak on behalf of the mayor this past week on two occasions, one at the Troy Junior High, welcome the 25 new teachers into the Troy City School District that are distributed throughout the school system, and provide them with the handout the mayor usually provides. They were an eager, young group, and I underline the word "younger" group because they all looked like children to me, but it was a good experience. Second of all, I got to read the proclamation at the Riverside Cemetery in observance of the historical marker that we have out there in the soldier circle with the recognition of the black soldiers that volunteered into the 54th and the 55th Massachusetts Infantry and those that are buried in that parcel. So it's a great honor to do that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Witten.
I had a question for Mr. Titterington. I heard -- I wasn't aware, just didn't check myself. Is the dam that we're not going to put the back in before we braise the water with the backup before we do construction?
I had mentioned that at the last meeting, that the dam gates would be open, the low dam gates will be open, and they will remain open through construction.
That's all I have for that. Other than it's been about a month or maybe a month and a half since I asked for more people to come to council, and it's been pretty well attended the last few weeks. So again, thank you for everyone coming to council. We really do appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Mrs. Marshall.
Wednesday, school starts, so I just want to wish everybody, students and staff, a great school year. And we have 282 days till the first day of summer. If my calculations are correct.
Mr. Schilling.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mrs. Westfall.
The only thing I wanted to say is, Mrs. Kerber, I appreciate you coming forth and voicing your opinion about it. I do feel like there was a lot of work that went into figuring out the comprehensive plan and where they could add housing. I've been on the other end, because I grew up in farm country north, and the other side of that is maybe a fourth or fifth generation farmer family that no longer lives in the area, and they want to sell their land, and people don't want them to sell it, and there's all that uprising, and people saying, how dare you tell me how -- what I can or can't do with my property. So there's two sides to everything, and I grew up in farm country. I have a heart for it. I appreciate it, and I do think we need to hold on to what we have, but we also need housing, so there's some give and take there. So I can sympathize with what you're saying. Thank you.
Mrs. Snee.
I just want to remind everyone that we are having our next at-large meeting on September 13th at 9:00 a.m. at the Hobart Institute of Welding. That is at 400 Trade Square East, and I understand that you are to enter from Trade Square East for that meeting. So we'll hope that people can come out and have a conversation about things on September 13th. Thank you.
Mr. Severt.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Beringer and Mr. Harrelson. I had a blood sugar low incident and had to go get some glucose tablets, so that's why I left in the middle of your presentations, but I will go back and look at them. So I appreciate you guys coming forward. I would like to piggyback on Mr. Phillips and give a shout-out to Sonya Holocross for the work that she did in the HRC in putting up that historical marker. That was at least a three-year, if not longer, process, and she was diligent with Salome and Lauren in getting that done, and it actually ended up being a very moving presentation with a number of people giving the history of Troy, and that was well worth it. And then the third thing I wanted to point out, and I got confirmation from the -- Mr. Titterington, in our packet, I do read those, and I was surprised for the occupancy permit going to plan a fitness at the Old Jumpy's location. So apparently, we're going to have a new tenant out behind McDonald's, and hopefully that it'll be patronized by Troy. I know there's a lot of people who went to Pickwa from the Troy area, and it'll be nice to have that in the area. That's all I have today.
Thank you.
I have a question, Patrick. Back on who are our participants when we met with the county for the -- when they met in conjunction with the comprehensive plan?
Their comprehensive plan? Well, whatever. We participated in their comprehensive plan. That would be the Development Director -- I can get you the exact folks that were involved. I was at several of those meetings as well, and I believe at least one other in the Planning Department, the Planning Section, was also participating.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor, I thank you for finally stating your views on the Proudly Plaza design or features there. I think that was welcomed by many people. Community comments. Members of the staff, we don't have a whole lot of staff, so we will go to the comments of the audience. Any members want to comment on anything, come to the podium. Once again, name and address. Have your say.
My name is Evan Goffney, and I'm joined here today by my brother Drew and my dad Matt. And we live in Sidney, Ohio. We are the owners and operators of the Ashley Furniture on Town Park Drive, and I'd like to start by saying how lucky we feel to be able to do business in this town, but also just to take advantage of the restaurants and the shopping and just all the great things that this community has to offer. The reason that we're here today is to talk about the existing signage codes that the city of Troy currently has, and I'm not sure if you guys are willing to answer questions, but we've heard chatter that there may be some tweaking or some possible changing to the signage codes, maybe blending them with the industrial codes. So I was wondering if anyone would be willing to elaborate on if there's any truth to that or if that has any traction at all.
So if you'll permit, I'll give them a little context. So there was apparently some confusion between the Ashley owners and the sign contractor who misinterpreted our code and represented, I believe it was basically twice as much sign allowance as there actually was, which typically we can, you know, we get there to the point before financial investment is made, but that was unfortunately not the case here. The code allows 100 square foot, and the sign contractor, my understanding is, thought that that was 200 square foot. And so they -- and I may not have the facts completely correct, but the signage on the front, let's say that was 100 square foot, and their thought was that they would be able to put the same exact signage on the back. And the reason that's important is that they do face and they are adjacent to the highway. So the visibility on the highway was an important feature. They're also too far away to have a high pole sign. That, too, is part of the code. Um, you know, we, we can't vary, uh, from the code like that, um, uh, as, as we've explained, uh, to Ashley's, uh, but the opportunity is now that we're looking at the zoning code and, and creating a unified development code, um, and we said we would look at it, um, what that might look like, uh, not sure yet because a consultant is, is looking at other, uh, communities. Um, one possible scenario is that is not to broaden, uh, the, the code, um, throughout an entire district, but perhaps have some kind of allowance similar to what we did ten or fifteen years ago now for Clopay, um, that, uh, if you are abutting the highway, that there could be some allowance in the future for, uh, for the ability to, uh, expand by some percentage, whether it's fifty percent, a hundred percent, you know, double, whatever, uh, to allow that additional advertising, uh, from the highway, because we think that would probably complement without being, you know, uh, too over the top. Uh, we have reached out to our consultant, he's working on the sign portion of the code, uh, and he's looking at options for us to discuss, and then we would bring that back to you with the, uh, the zoning code update, um, later this year.
Excellent. Uh, I, I appreciate, um, those comments. If you guys would be willing to humor us for just two additional minutes, I'd like my brother to come up and talk to you, uh, specifically about how it's impacting us and kind of what, what we'd be looking to, to get out of it, and I have just a couple of things to hand out, I don't have enough, but I'll kind of spread them out and have them come up. They're just their renderings of what it would look like on, on the highway side. Have we have five yards.
Uh, Drew Goffney, 3155 Children's Home Road in Sidney. Um, so, just to kind of elaborate on some of the stuff that he's already talked about, you know, this was a five million dollar investment for us, so we spent almost a million dollars on the land because of the visibility to interstate. Um, so when we found out we couldn't put the signs back there, that was a pretty huge blow to us. Also very excited about Texas Roadhouse, obviously. Um, we knew something was getting developed in between us, uh, we heard it was a hotel, we didn't realize how it was going to be situated. So if you look at some of those photos there, it is right up by the road. Um, that picture was taken less than a hundred yards, uh, from our parking lot. So I would guess to say that traffic probably significantly drops off after Texas Roadhouse. I don't have those facts in front of me, um, but I would have to imagine that that's definitely the case. Um, to add insult to injury, Ashley allowed another licensee to open up twenty minutes down the road in Huber Heights, so we are fighting for online visibility as well right now. Um, it's our experience that people drive south to shop, we have to be able to catch them coming down interstate. We're the first building you see, um, in Troy. It'd be a big, beautiful sign there. Um, I think it would be awesome to, to let people know that Troy can support, you know, support global brands like Ashley. Um, our sales forecast was between five and six million in annual sales in the last twelve months, we did three. Traffic is down thirty percent from last year already. Um, we constantly have customers coming in and telling us that they couldn't find us and they didn't even know we were in Troy. Um, again, that's, that's the visibility to interstate and competing for that online traffic with the other store. Um, because we're a new business, Google and Apple Maps is still sending people to Outback Steakhouse when they look us up, um, so we're still fighting with that. At the very beginning, that's where it sent people. Now it's fifty-fifty, it still glitches back and forth, so we're working on that. Um, we can't make the sign on the front of the building smaller, honestly, we can't afford it. We've got a second set of signs sitting, ready to go up, we'd have to close our doors down, we'd have to take the, the siding down, patch holes, we'd have to close for a little while. Um, the monument sign, that is so critical for us because of the way the hotel went up. We have to be able to put that up. We, we've talked about putting the monument sign out back, we, we need the monument sign out front, we already have electricity ran out there. Um, we completely understand that this is not the city's fault, this is Ferguson Construction for not doing their proper due diligence for us and blatantly hiding it from us to the very end. Um, so we're not asking for help, we're begging, um, we know there's a lot of stuff that you guys have, priority, you know, a lot of stuff going on, this is a major priority for us and for my family. I'm the fourth generation, I've got three little kids, and I'd like to be able to pass it on to them and make it the fifth, so, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, you said they were too far away to have a pole sign, too far away from the street?
From the entrance ramp, no, the entrance ramp. Uh, there are two different issues. Uh, there's an issue with the monument sign.
What's a monument sign?
Uh, that would be the, the ground sign that you, that you see, but I guess it could be a monument as well, the pole, uh, the super tall poles, uh, those are only allowed within, I think, a thousand feet of the on-ramp, uh, to, uh, to get off the highway.
Too far back.
Uh, right. Uh, as for the, um, uh, the restaurant, um, they were, you know, there, there are some allowances, they're so far up and back that you can go in the setbacks, and, you know, they just chose to be, uh, farther, closer to the road, uh, and, and what they did instead was, is that they used their sign allowance to put it all on the back, so it was completely oriented to, uh, to the highway, which is an option, uh, but after the fact, we understand that, you know, there's some concerns with what has already been done.
I think part of that too is that the Ashley Company requires that and will not allow that to be moved, so that is not just a, a decision on the Goffneys' part, that is Ashley Furniture.
My, my question is basically is to his comment of, they were too far back. Too far back of what?
Sure.
Okay. Mrs. Westfall?
What's the investment in the second sign? How much money do you have invested?
Uh, I want to say it was between forty and fifty thousand.
Okay. Significant.
Yes.
Anyone else on any other topic?
I have another question.
Huh?
I just got a question.
Okay.
Uh, we just, Steve Hennington, 975 Dickerson, we all participated in the park survey, I'm just wondering if the results are in or what it said?
Uh, they're still putting, uh, they're still compiling all of the survey data, uh, doing some ranking, doing some charts, uh, we should have a draft of that portion of it in the, in the coming weeks. Uh, we finished up with the, uh, the focus groups, um, uh, there is some discussion about doing maybe a little deeper dive, uh, that, uh, maybe on the, um, the, uh, next committee agenda, um, a, a deeper dive into what we heard from the, uh, different sports groups, um, what their requests are, and, um, what our market looks like, uh, by a potential subcontractor of, uh, American Structure Point, so that we can fold all of that in, so that when council makes their priorities, they've got a realistic, um, idea of, you know, what the trends are, um, what the capacity of, of, uh, different sports are in, and, you know, number of fields or number of, uh, uh, well, fields, football, soccer, whatever, um, and, um, and what the region looks like. Uh, so that's, that, uh, hopefully be the next step, uh, before presenting all of that to the council as one, at Park and Recreation Board, and then the council, um, as a, a comprehensive, you know, idea for, uh, prioritization. So, uh, long answer to a short question, um, they are still looking at it, we did get an update, uh, very briefly on their status, and they are going to be, um, finishing those charts, uh, pretty soon, a couple of weeks or so.
So should we expect it in Septem, by September?
Um, I would think so, but let me, let me look into that and get back to you, um, on exactly where they're at.
Can you tell me how many responses you got?
Oh, uh...
Just the raw numbers?
We, uh...
If it's more than seven...
Boy, I'm go, oh, it was, yeah, it was actually, if you recall, we had a staggering in number of surveys for the comprehensive plan, we had even more surveys for the Park and Rec, smaller master plan than we did the entire plan. Uh, so it was in the, I want to say it was between seven and eight hundred.
So that's going to take some time to go through?
Uh, yes, but, you know, we have, they have some AI that they can use, and they've got some statistical analyses that they can do, and so, you know, they can get it all, because it was all done on one of the survey monkey-type things that you get online, so a lot of that stuff is software-driven.
Scares me when you say AI, but it's okay.
Me too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, Bradley Baron Request would drive, and I'm going to try to be just as brief as Steve was. Um, Mr. President, I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Titterington, if I may. Um, Mr. Titterington, it seems like, from what I'm hearing, it seems like we tend to be a little reactive when it comes to projects, maybe I'm wrong in this, but has the city, does the city have a multi-year capital improvement plan currently?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. We've had one for, we've got a five-year plan for the last, uh, at least nineteen budgets that I've been involved in.
Okay, and, uh, that is available online, yes?
It is.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dana Schilling, I live at 1 West Franklin Street here downtown Troy. I just want to say, I, I've talked to several people around town, I live in what they call the Morris House, I'm a senior citizen, um, I was a nurse and a paramedic in my career, and, uh, we have a building, Bowers, next door, that's being refurbished, which I'm really excited that they're doing that. However, I found out that there's nothing in the planning commission or inspection, um, or any kind of inspections that happen when buildings are being refurbished in this town. And so, you know, old buildings could have asbestos, God knows what else could be in there, and this stuff is traveling into our building. I have asthma, and usually I don't sound this bad, but, um, it's been pretty bad. What my particular apartment is against their, um, business. So I endured this week about, or this summer, about four weeks of dirt, dust, I mean, really, I felt like I was in the cornfield having a fan blow dirt in my face all the time. Um, now they're, uh, I think they're through with that part, but now they're using chemicals to do something with something with, I don't know what it is. Um, and nobody inspects that part either. I just would think that the planning commission, when buildings are but other buildings, especially when there's, I believe, thirty-seven of us in there, would have some kind of an, a, set inspection, that you just come over and see what they're pulling out, instead of in the middle of the night, they could be pulling out asbestos, taking it to the junkyard because it always tends to leave at night, so we really don't know what we've been subjected to. Um, and as far as I understand from the plans that are turned in, I don't know that they really know what, um, coatings or cleaners or, as far as I know, the water was the cleaner, but after that, there was some kind of pretty strong smell, don't know what that involved. So I'd just like to suggest that you maybe look at, um, some further inspections, just, I mean, you know, it doesn't take that long for an inspector to walk over there when they're ready to tear out and just see what it looks like in there, and also when they start applying different chemicals to walk over and, uh, check and make sure that they're legal and, and okay for people's health. Um, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Our next meeting is Tuesday, September 2nd, 7 o'clock, right here in Council Chambers. We are adjourned.